A whole bunch of mayors in the audience and just all I hear is talk. Good evening, I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll declare the agenda as approved and go to announcements. Are there any announcements from members of council for any items that are upcoming? Counselor Thorburn, I knew you-
It is not a built museum, Your Worship. Unfortunately, because of the bad weather night, the fire department with the Red Bull Garden Party will not be canvassing tonight, but they will be open tomorrow night and the rest of the week. There's probably forty-three volunteers and eight or ten juniors that canvass the town every year for funds to assist with some of their projects. And they will canvass every household in Bridgewater. And if you wish, you can just call 902-543-2424 and they will come pick your donation up. Or if you have any questions, please call that number. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Counselor McDonald?
Just wanted to thank Morgan DeMone, who put a huge amount of time and effort into planning the first annual, we hope it's annual, skate park competition over the weekend. There was a pretty good turnout of competitors. They had incredible skill and talent. They skateboarded all day long. They were exhausted, they were out in the sun, and they just never quit. And Morgan put countless hours into planning that event and pulling everything together. I know we reached out many times and asked if there was anything that we could do and he just had it all under control. It was fantastic. And I think the community really enjoyed themselves. I talked to a lot of parents who actually, a really interesting conversation that I had. I spend a lot of weekends in gyms and I think many of us spend them poolside or in rinks and we get to cheer our kids on on a regular basis. For some of these parents, this was the first time that they got to come out and cheer for their own kids and to support them in the sport that they've chosen. And it was a really special experience for some of the parents as much as it was for the youth and the adults who were competing. So I think it meant a lot to the community. Morgan brought something really important to the town of Bridgewater and to the residents and to those in surrounding communities. I hope that they do it again because it was a fantastic time.
Yeah, it was in places past. I would encourage anyone who's only driven by to maybe stop their car and get out and walk up to the edge of it because it's one thing to see it from the road, but it is quite impressive when you get to the edge of it and see just how big it is and all the angles and all the curves. And that's a twelve-month-a-year facility. It was used most days all winter, so that's quite something. Any other announcements of things coming up? So I've got this box that's sitting in front of me. This is our first meeting since we won the Smart Cities Challenge, so in case you haven't heard, the town of Bridgewater won the Smart Cities Challenge in our category, our five million dollar category for Energize Bridgewater Plan. And this is, I guess that's what five million dollars is. That's our award. So that's the award that will go alongside quite a few other awards for Energize Bridgewater. So we've built up quite the momentum and this is an exciting time. And more information is going to come from staff to the public and council to the public as we move along into the future. I know there's lots of questions that we get. First one is always, what are you going to do with the five million dollars? And the second one is where is the five million dollars? And so some of those questions haven't even been answered by the federal government yet, so we're working with them, but we're very excited and very proud of staff, councils that go back many, many years because this is not just an initiative from this council. This goes all the way back to the very first sustainability plan that was created, but also the community that has bought into this as a path forward for alleviating not just energy poverty in our community, but reducing our carbon footprint of our town. So we should all be patting ourselves on the back because it's every person in this community that's involved. So we have quite a full gallery today and the reason for that is probably because our first, I'm going to call it delegation, but it's a presentation from none other than Ozzy Styles. So our town crier is going to enlighten us with his forty years of being a town crier in the town of Bridgewater. So Mr. Styles, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Worship. I happen to have what you just mentioned on my first card. How was that? Good evening, Your Worship and council members, ladies and gentlemen. Off the top, I want to congratulate everyone here at Town Hall for winning the Smart Cities Challenge. To win over forty-nine other communities is just plain huge. It's just plain huge. And our congratulations to everybody. Well done. My thanks all to you for attendance tonight as we celebrate my retirement as your town crier for almost forty years. To help me celebrate, we have six of the finest men here, of which we will say a special thank you later. Of course, I'm referring to the six former mayors from 1976 and for me, it's from 1979. And I'm sorry, David, you're not former yet.
Not yet.
You will be. It's not the way it sounds. Tonight, it's hard for me to explain forty years into twenty minutes, so thought I would just pick out a few highlights over the years, which I thought were important, bearing in mind that the town crier represents the mayor and its council first, and then the citizens of the town or city is the next. Also, I mentioned a few travel trips I had to honor to do on behalf of the town. My first visit was to Bermuda in 1982. It was a gathering of town criers and not a competition. We were there for ten days and did cries all over the island and we were wined and dined all over the island, all free of charge. And one of our criers even got married there. We did a bells up, not swords up, a bells up, as he came up to church. That, of course, was Lord Smith of Windsor, and I flatter him mention this at this time. The other trips, which were two trips to England and to Bridgewater, England, they treated us well over there. Another trip was to Javer in North Germany, where we cried through a large town crier center of approximately 12,000 people. We were there and we cried from the balcony to the large crowd below. I only placed six on that one. Another wonderful trip was to Get Belgium for a world championship by invitation only. They wined and dined us as well, three large buses every day and everywhere we went, we were well looked after. Also, I tripped the Isle of Wight, England. Criers did a line of honor for the Queen Elizabeth. Prince Philip came across the street to us and we had a brief chat with all the criers. Now, I only had time for some memorable cries and events, and in no particular order, just some that come to mind. The dates would be on my scrolls and I have every scroll. Many years ago, we did the Freedom of Bridgewater on a block off King Street with Lieutenant Governor Jim Kinley. Only early part of it, we know that. The fiftieth and seventy-fifth anniversary of Apple Blossom Parade with each queen in a convertible. A sight to see. Their beauty was still there after all those years. We weren't doing a cry there, we were just leading the parade. That was of many parades. A welcome cry to the president of General Motors in a packed Wondertainment motel. She was a lovely lady. We had a great chat after the cry and she wanted to know all about town crime. She did not know too much about it. The ninetieth and one-hundredth anniversary of town of Bridgewater, that was a highlight. The two cries at Walmart's grand opening, one for the dignitaries and one for the general public. I also did a welcome to Nova Scotia video for the Prince of Fundy Ferry, Yarmouth to Portland in 1989. And that video was shot in our town park. And I have so much to be thankful for that because so many people were on that and as they came into Nova Scotia, there I was welcoming them. I was not going to read, I wasn't going to read this card, but what the heck, you're only going this way once, Ozzy boy. My cry in Lunenburg was good enough for me to be named champion, Nova Scotia champion. And that was the two-hundredth anniversary of Lunenburg. That was in 2003. I had the privilege of being Nova Scotia Guild of Town Criers President for three years and I proudly wear the medal presented to me in 2005 at the championships held in Annapolis Royal as best Nova Scotia ambassador. Trophies go with these awards as well. Perhaps the cry that I most cherish was when we did a cry for a sod turning ceremony of the new hospital. We found a clearing which became Glen Allen Drive, actually. Premier Buchanan came to Bridgewater and he's in the photo. The reason I cherish this because I think people of Bridgewater need good medical attention and then I had the privilege to cheer the first CAT scan. They tracked me down in Vancouver, I was visiting my daughter and we got that CAT scan all, now I think they're on the second one. You get the picture and we did it all and we had it all to be done. And there was so much more. I only wish I had my scrapbooks put on video. Maybe I will do that at a later time. And so much more I just mentioned. Parades would be one subject, we're not going to talk about that. Second would be the two Nova Scotia championships that Bridgewater hosted in this town. And so much involved when hosting. We also have a lot of annual meetings that criers take turns at hosting. And Bridgewater hosted our spring meeting right here two years ago, I think it was, David, was it two years ago? Yep. And the boys are still talking about that because they use this chamber for their meeting. That's something that they thought that was just the greatest thing they've ever done for, as far as the meeting goes. They still talk about that. Yes, we are here to announce my retirement and at this point, I would like to say a sincere thank you to the six mayors who I had their names mentioned in most of my cries. They and their councils were like family. I knew so many of the counselors as well as the mayors. That's from my long time with the Chronicle Herald, I guess. They and their councils were like family. I cannot think of one problem over the thirty-nine and a half years. If I needed a gift to a town, it was always available and gift wrapped and signed by His Worship. And that's, to explain that is when I go to competitions in towns, mostly in Nova Scotia, our hosting, we take a gift and we receive a gift, usually at the annual dinner. So that's where Sandra comes in to work because she used to wrap all the gifts. And speaking of Sandra-
You're going to kind of-
Huh? And speaking of Sandra, I think it's time to present to our former mayors a small token from the town crier who says, "Thank you, gentlemen, for your support. We both helped to make Bridgewater the town that has become very respected all over the province. Thank you, everyone, for coming. It was a pleasure to represent you, the citizens of Bridgewater." Sandra, let's start the presentations. This guy started it all for me. He was my first mayor. I'd like to have Harry Cook come down in. What I would really like to do is not open this until they all receive this. Would you do that, Harry?
That's fine.
Huh? Thank you, my friend.
Sure.
Again, thank you so much. Okay, you will put that right here, Harry. Harry was mayor from 1976 to 1988. What's the next one there, man? Oh, the bird man. Tom Bird, come on over, Tom. Where can the mayors go? Down here?
Why don't we come down here because then we'll do a picture after.
Come down here. Thank you, sir.
Go in here, Harry.
Come down there in the center in the room of the section photos. I'll tell you who wants the photos, it's the museum.
You're not old enough, Ozzy.
Wow.
I'm just following you.
You can just sit right in front of Bill, sit on the desk.
Very well. 1991 to 2004. Does that sound more regular?
Yeah.
That's just a little fun we're having here. Carol Paltman-Cover.
No problem.
Carol Paltman-Cover, he had two terms, 2004 to 2012. Good to see you again, my friend. Oh, you can't hear that.
You just get to touch it for a second.
There's another one we're looking for. David Walker, 2012 to 2016. Thank you, David. Thank you. And this guy here, we only got one date on there for you, sir. Come on over, 2016. Now, we'll be four in a row. 1916. Take a hand. Come down here. You know you put me to work. Okay. Harry, I just want to say this here.
Thank you.
Tom Bird.
They should line up there.
David Walker.
Hey, the town crushed.
Now, gentlemen, I want you to open up your gifts. Wait a minute. Please, Mr.-
I can't see it.
That's why. That's why. Very nice. Thank you. Very, very nice.
Can we line up with the backdrop of the seal and put Ozzy in the middle and get a picture?
Yeah, Ozzy. What do you need, yeah? Dinner's ready.
Why don't we go over here, Harry, why don't you go over here? Do you want to run a happy one, boys? Huh? There's Carol still wearing sneakers, counsel. My brush's always too. This means you guys can all fill in for the next caller. We will. You can replace her. Cause that was all it is.
Can you imagine how much noise we'd make at the lumberjack games now?
Just kind of glare off the screen.
That's humid. There you go.
Why isn't that three? One, two, three. Like old guns. We actually had a roast together.
We did. We roasted.
We got roasted with meat and stuff.
Long time ago.
Hold that. Thank you for the pictures, Josh.
No problem, Ozzy.
You're being my bracer, right? Do you want one with Minister Fury while he's here? Yes, please. Oh, no, no, Mark, come on, Mark. Come on, Mark. Well, you don't need to change this all the time. The question is, boys, you always wear red. Oh, yeah. Nice grab. Every ninety years old, it's been very fast. Thank you very much, Harry. Appreciate it. Oh, we all get touched. We all get touched. Oh, Shannon, I'm sorry, the story hasn't been told. Thank you all for the summer festival.
Summer Fest. I remember that. I was present in the chamber conference.
That's the story all again.
I'll have the great time.
Wayne, you've been a good friend. I made you a good husband. David. Come on, Walker. Take your time. I'll get it for you after.
All right, thank you, Ozzy, very much. Of course, a big thanks to Ozzy for his years of service to this community. I don't know how you feel about shoes. Our next agenda item is we have Angela Taylor, who's the enforcement officer for the Municipal Joint Service Board, here to present as a delegation.
Good evening. My name's Angela Taylor and the compliance officer for the Municipal Joint Services Board. And here with me tonight, I've got my supervisor, Stephanie Smith, who's a outreach and communication supervisor, so we're going to be presenting together this evening. You want to join us, Stephanie? And tonight, we're just going to talk about some of the litter cleanups and participation we get within the town of Bridgewater and the municipality of Lunenburg and talk about some of the initiatives that we're going to do as well, surrounding litter.
Good evening, Your Worship and council. To begin, we'll give a bit of background about our initiatives that we have here in Lunenburg County. So there are several, one of which has been longstanding with the Community Recycling Center, which we're very proud to talk about. So to give a bit of background, let's talk about how it all began. So the Earth Day Litter Challenge actually began back in 1999 and at that time, Light House Publishing challenged CKBW Radio to do litter cleanups within the town. And in doing so and accepting the challenge, CKBW also invited town residents to join. So that was sort of the kickoff to the litter cleanup. And that was at the same time during Earth Week, so they were doing that in celebration of the earth and also just making sure that they tidied up the communities that they were living in. And at the time, the waste site supplied some of the litter bags and GE's All Trucking, which is not being environmental, offered to provide in-kind support, so they gathered up the litter bags after everybody was finished, which was wonderful. And by 2002, participation had grown quite a bit, so we had a lot of different community groups, schools, businesses, church groups throughout Lunenburg County that were participating. And usually it was happening during April, but that's not to say that it didn't happen during other times as well, but usually in April around birthday. By 2018, we saw some of our biggest participation. We saw over 2,000-plus residents, forty-three groups had signed up within 38 communities. So it's pretty outstanding, the amount of participation that we had. And we've had many dedicated groups over the years, one of which that we'd really like to acknowledge is Social Wildlife Association. They usually do cleanups within four different communities and last year, for example, they spent about ninety-one and a half hours collecting litter and they covered 10 kilometers of roadway within Lunenburg County, which was exceptional. And other longstanding groups are, some of which are from town of Bridgewater, Women Unlimited from Nova Scotia Community College, Nature's Reflections, La Haye River Credit Union, Beavers and Cubs from Maitland, The Ark, Small World Learning Center, and of course, town of Bridgewater. Going to give them a shout out because they've done a wonderful job. They've been very dedicated staff and council and we thank you very much for being involved. And you can see the numbers have remained somewhat steady over the years. Sometimes the weather impacts it a little bit, but for the most part, we do see that we have a good core group of about 2,000 people that get involved every year. So another program that's very widely participated in is Adopt a Highway and that's actually put on by the Department of Transportation Infrastructure Renewal. So that was established in 1992 and a lot of organizations, volunteer groups, community groups, et cetera, they all get involved. They commit to doing usually about two cleanups a year, which is great. And there are about 170 groups right now, province-wide, that are involved in this. And any of the groups that do cleanups within our area bring their waste to the Community Recycling Center and they waive the tipping fees for them. So the 2019 Earth Day Challenge, that actually took place officially on Wednesday, April 24th. However, we did have groups that participated throughout all of April and we still have groups that have yet to do their cleanup. So it's pretty great to see that they're still out there and they're, you know, trying to dodge the weather. It's been kind of a rough spring, but they've been out there and they've been doing their So I'm going to hand it over to Angela Taylor and she's going to talk a little bit about litter and also litter abatement.
Thank you. So some of the most common causes of litter that I have found are caused from rejected waste, waste that's off the curbside, residents not retrieving, their garbage that gets rejected or they put it out on the wrong day. Unsecured loads or unintentional littering, as I like to call it. Sometimes if you own a truck, you might throw a coffee cup in the back not thinking that as soon as you drive away, it's going to fly out the window. And also unsecured loads, Highway 325 is heavily littered and I think partly due because people, when they do deliver their loads, aren't properly securing them, so we have started a program to combat that. And of course, you know, out the window syndrome or just simply being lazy, not waiting till they get home, not looking or bothered to find a bin, they just want to get rid of it then and there for whatever reason. But most people know, when I talk to them, especially when they go into schools, they know littering's wrong. So why do they still do it? As I mentioned, the program that we're doing that's tackling the unsecured loads, this sign that you see here, we posted it at the end of Mollick Road on either end, so Highway 3 and the 325. So as you're pulling onto the road, you're going to see this, hopefully as a reminder. When people do deliver unsecured loads to the waste site, the scale operators are trained to know what that looks like and they are given a warning. I keep track of all the warnings and if they get two or more, then that's when I step in and talk to them or either, you know, they could get a ticket as well. I can give them an administrative ticket. I haven't had to do that yet since May last year. I've only ever had to give one person two warnings and that was it. Most people, once you've talked to them and explained to them, they've been really good. The window syndrome, so this, I believe it's a learned behavior. I go into elementary schools multiple times a year, we always talk about litter. I teach kids that litter is waste that's not in its place. You know, they get very excited when they go out to do a litter cleanup. They are proud when I walk in the school saying, "I threw it in the right bin." They love to tell me that. So I think over time, as they get older, maybe they've seen it, they've seen someone else do it, it's been accepted. Maybe they have a parent or a guardian that does it all the time that never gets caught because unfortunately, people aren't really enforced on when it comes to litter. So since last year, I have three reports of littering has come- And there are about 170 groups right now province-wide that are involved in this. And any of the groups that do cleanups within our area bring their waste to the Community Recycling Center and they waive the tipping fees for them. So the 2019 Earth Day Challenge, that actually took place officially on Wednesday, April 24th. However, we did have groups that participated throughout all of April, and we still have groups that have yet to do their cleanup. So it's pretty great to see that they're still out there and they're, you know, trying to dodge the weather. It's been kind of a rough spring, but they've been out there and they've been doing their thing. So I'm going to hand it over to Angela Taylor, and she's going to talk a little bit about litter and also litter abatement.
Thank you. So some of the most common causes of litter that I have found are caused from rejected waste, waste that's off the curbside. Residents aren't retrieving, their garbage has been rejected, or they've put it out on the wrong day. Unsecured loads or unintentional littering, as I like to call it. Sometimes if you own a truck, you might throw a coffee cup in the back, not thinking that as soon as you drive away, it's going to fly out the window. And also unsecured loads, Highway 325 is heavily littered. And I think partly due because people, when they do deliver their loads, aren't properly securing them. So we have started a program to combat that. And of course, you know, out the window syndrome, or just simply being lazy, not waiting till they get home, not looking or bothered to find a bin. They just want to get rid of it then and there for whatever reason. But most people know, when I talk to them, especially when I go into schools, they know littering's wrong. So why do they still do it? As I mentioned, the program that we're doing that's tackling the unsecured loads, this sign that you see here, we posted it at the end of Mollick Road on either end. So Highway three and the 325. So as you're pulling onto the road, you're going to see this hopefully as a reminder. When people do deliver unsecured loads to the waste site, the scale operators are trained to know what that looks like, and they are given a warning. I keep track of all the warnings, and if they get two or more, then that's when I step in and talk to them. Or either, you know, they could get a ticket as well. I can give them an administrative ticket. I haven't had to do that yet since May last year. I've only ever had to give one person two warnings, and that was it. Most people, once you've talked to them and explained to them, they've been really good. The window syndrome, so this, I believe it's a learned behavior. I go into elementary schools multiple times a year, we always talk about litter. I teach kids that litter is waste that's not in its place. You know, they get very excited when they go out to do a litter cleanup. They are proud when I walk in the school saying, "I threw it in the right bin." They love to tell me that. So I think over time, as they get older, maybe they've seen it, they've seen someone else do it, it's been accepted. Maybe they have a parent or a guardian that does it all the time that never gets caught. Because unfortunately, people aren't really enforced on when it comes to litter. So since last year, I have, three reports of littering has come across my desk. And all three reports, I actually didn't enforce on the person, and they did pay a penalty for it. So this sign that you see here, you might have noticed, is on the 325 between Bridgewater and Home Bay. We put those up last spring, just to see if it would have an effect on people. I don't know, maybe if they had the perception that they were being watched, that they would think twice about throwing anything out their window. And again, it's to, you know, encourage people to report it. A lot of residents that I talk to, especially about litter, they're kind of discouraged because they tell me, "Well, we've reported it before. Nothing's happened, so what's the point?" So my job is trying to gain their trust back, letting them know, "Well, if you do report, if you can capture a license plate number, that's key. I can absolutely follow up on that. It will not go on deaf ears, just give me a call, I will follow up." So these signs were put up. Social Wildlife did a cleanup last year on the 325 on specific sections of the highway. They cleaned up a total of about 125 bags. They did it again this year. They're so wonderful. And they did the same amount of roadway. And I'm happy to report that they've cleaned up 116 bags. So it has gone down. I don't know if it has to do with the signs, I like to think that it is. But the good news is at least it's gone down some. They were happy with that as well. I am getting newer signs made, so that the eyes are a lot bigger. The wording's going to be a bit different as well. We don't want as much wording because that's a road that you're traveling 80 kilometers. And so you need time to see what you're going to read going that fast. And so I'm hoping to put up six more signs on that stretch of Ludenburgh water. And again, just to see next year if that number goes down even more. We're also going to start a social media campaign against littering. And it's about the litter excuses that we hear. And the tagline is going to be "Find a bin or take it home." It really is that simple. So this is just one of what you might see, you know, in the newspaper, on Facebook, you know, newsletters, anywhere we can put it. So that's the number one excuse, "I couldn't find a bin." How many times have we heard that from someone? However, if you were to walk the streets of Bridgewater, there are bins everywhere. Everywhere you go, there are more than enough bins, you know, to put your waste away. There's no excuse for throwing it on the ground at any time. So, which is what I say there, litter and face a fine up to $697. Hashtag Nova Scotia Doesn't Litter. The other part of it is going to encourage people to report it. Again, I need to gain their trust back. I need to let them know if they do report it, there is something I can do about it. It's not going to go on deaf ears. So that $2 coffee you're buying at Tim Hortons, technically, if you're seeing thrown out the window, could cost you $600. You know, that's a pretty expensive coffee. And this is the other thing, most people don't know, they know that, you know, you could get fined for it. They know, you know, you could get charged. But no one has ever been charged, so it's kind of like urban myth, I guess. You know, it's like speeding. A lot of people speed, and you're going to continue to speed until you get caught. And now I think it's time that these people start getting caught, because I think over time, it's going to change their behavior. With illegal dumping, and again, it's another awareness campaign, because last year, I got about eighty-eight reports of illegal dumping that I investigated. And a lot of those do end up in a penalty. The person is found and they're charged. But that news doesn't get out there, so people don't understand that. Once they've called and given the complaint, the complaint that I will follow up with to let them know what the outcome was, but no one else hears about it. They don't hear that these people are getting caught. So we're going to do a media campaign just to let people know, you are getting caught for illegal dumping. So here's an example of when I did last year, last fall, that person was charged $452. And that's all waste that just could have put, you could have put up to your curb, into your driveway. Thank you.
Questions from members of council? Any questions? It's Council Graves first.
So what is the number one piece of litter that's on the streets? Is it coffee cups? Is it fast food containers?
That's what we heard over the last Earth Day Challenge litter cleanup in April, was fast food packaging. And interestingly enough, a lot of packaging from cannabis as well, which I found interesting as well during the cleanup, and of course, cigarette packaging.
So do you have conversations with the fast food restaurants to see if you stop at the source?
Yeah, we've had those conversations, but I mean, ultimately, when it comes to the fast food, I think at this point, they're doing what they can. It's customer behavior, right? So, I mean, like for Tim Hortons, for example, they do put, they do have signs that say, "Be a good neighbor, please don't litter." They do, you know, put it on their cup. They do advertising over, you know, encouraging people not to litter. But unfortunately, as soon as they hand that customer that cup, they're not in control of it at that point, right? So.
Coach Thurbin.
Is there any special age groups, or is there a wide range of all age groups that littering?
That's a good question. I don't know if I can answer that comfortably. In my experience and what I see in the people that I've dealt with, with, you know, people getting caught, it's actually been people in like their mid twenties to mid thirties out when I'm talking to. It hasn't really been teenagers or the younger crowd, or even the older. I'd say mid twenties to thirties that I've dealt with personally.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from members of council? Great, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Just before we kind of move along and everyone leaves, I just want to again acknowledge and thank the former mayors being here. Mayor Cook and Mayor Byrd and Mayor Bulliver and Mayor Publicover, Mayor Walker, for coming out and celebrating Ozzy with us. So I appreciate you taking the time and coming down. And thank you to you, Ozzy.
I brought this in with me, with my bell, and I put it underneath the podium. Totally forgot it. It's for this little lady over here. This lady over here made you guys fly the wave. Whenever I need to say something to the mayor, I phone Sandra, and she's there. She says, "I'll see what I can do for you, Ozzy." You're welcome, buddy.
Does yours have an end date? I hope not. You're good, all right. Thanks, Ozzy.
Thanks, Ozzy.
Still getting used to these glasses. They're on, they're off, they're on, they're off. I'm just going to ask if there are any other delegations, but seems they were all former mayors, so they're all gone. Moving down, we have the minutes of the April 23rd regular council meeting and the May 13th regular council meeting. Are there any questions, errors, or omissions on those? Hearing none. We'll deem those approved and work our way down to planning and public hearing. So. Right, public hearing here and open the public hearing. And that sure requirements have all been met and has been circulated, advertised. And we will now move over to information from the planner.
Thanks. Yeah, so this is for the public hearing, for an application to amend the land use bylaw to enable temporary commercial uses. So this amendment would permit temporary commercial structures in the historic downtown commercial zone and the La Havre commercial zone for 150 days consecutively within a calendar year on private property. And they would be subject to urban design requirements in the land use bylaw. Currently, temporary commercial structures are only permitted on non-residential lots in all zones except for the C1 zone. And that's for 210 consecutive days in a 12-month period. So the purpose of this amendment is to provide more reasons to visit downtown, generate more people on King Street through business clustering, activate spaces that are not currently strengthening the downtown, to enable an additional use for the property owners, as well as an option for new business startups that may not be able to have a permanent structure to start with. So this bylaw amendment would be one that would, sorry, one way to enable urban infill, which is beneficial as it increases the density of the built environment in areas where we want density to occur. It builds and fosters community by literally bringing people together with more opportunities. It focuses on reuse and repositioning of obsolete or underutilized buildings and sites, and activates neighborhoods to make them more useful and livelier for longer periods of the day and night. So this is a map that I've shown before, just some opportunities where this urban infill could happen. As mentioned, the town would enable these uses through the land use bylaw, but it would be up to business owners and property owners to make it happen. So these possible places of opportunity are based on space and parking requirements. And some of the sites have constraints, so we don't expect all of them to be used for this manner. And I wanted to touch on the difference of space and place. So it's important to create spaces in, or sorry, places in communities. And spaces are more of a physical thing, where place is social and more focused on people. And it's necessary to activate spaces to become places. And sociability, uses and activities, access and linkages, and comfort and image are ways to help create this place. And these places support human interaction, economic exchange, and well-being. But public places can be negatively affected by auto dominance, inactive storefronts, and vacant spaces, which makes it difficult to encourage this place. And another thing is something that the Project for Public Spaces calls the Power of Ten. So it discusses how a city or region should have ten major destinations. A destination should then have ten places, and a place should have ten things to do. So an example is the town of Bridgewater, one of these destinations being the downtown. And this destination should have multiple places, so parks and stores and restaurants. And then each place would need to have ten things to do. So a park would have benches to sit on, programming to participate in, things like bikes to rent or games to play. And although ten is the number that's used, that's just an example, and it would be smaller in smaller places. But the point is to make a place more than the sum of its parts. The goal is to give people something to see or engage with, to encourage pedestrians to spend more time somewhere. So this could look like a few different things. This is in Halifax, in a place called New Space. It has pop-up local small businesses, arts and entertainment. It embraces an uptake in seasonal visitors. It's also a platform for small local businesses to start up, and it's similar to what would be done here. It's on private land. Temporary structures can be shipping containers, so these are just some examples of different opportunities that could happen in those spaces, like a bike rental place or a coffee shop. And this is just an example of how a vacant space can be used in between buildings for something different. You can see the kind of shipping container in the background. And there are also not necessarily always going to be restaurants. So garden centers are something that could be enabled through this, as well as winter seasonal uses. And this is something that's just a little bit different as well. It's a pop-up library. So again, it doesn't even have to necessarily be retail, just a place for people to be. So there was a public information meeting, and notices were delivered to retail and restaurants in the C1 and C2 zone. It was held on April 10th at 6:00 PM at the Desperizy Museum, and six members of the public attended with three staff members there too. There were also additional presentations to the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee and the Chamber of Commerce. And just to touch on the things that we heard from them, there were some concerns that permanent businesses would then turn to seasonal businesses. But staff see this as just providing different opportunities for permanent businesses. But it would enable options if permanent businesses wouldn't work for everyone. Another concern was aesthetics, but there are going to be urban design requirements for the built form, and these structures would need to be kept in a good state of repair. There was the talk about having a specific distance set from existing businesses, but the area isn't that large, so adding, this requirement may reduce opportunities. And we actually spoke to Yarmouth, who have a similar section in their land use bylaw called seasonal retail uses. And they require a setback from businesses for people using the vending bylaw, which is something that we do as well. But they don't for those that are considered a seasonal retail use. And an example of how theirs have worked with how many development permits they've given for seasonal retail use. Last year, they issued seven, and these were including Christmas tree sales, seasonal garden centers, and lunch and coffee trucks. And their seasonal vendors are actually located in a lot of zones, not just the downtown. They had one in their downtown. And there was also discussion about what this timeframe might look like. And staff have mentioned the 150 days consecutively. And this is to enable flexibility throughout the year. So it doesn't have to be in the summer, it doesn't have to be in the winter. There's flexibility in that. And one of the final things we heard was kind of a consensus among people is that the downtown needs more people, and finding ways to bring them there is a good idea. So when staff reviewed town policy, this amendment was supported in various documents. So the Downtown and Waterfront Master Plan discussed flexible Main Street zoning, reduced parking requirements using vacant land for infill, and strategic infill of parking on La Havre Street. The Economic Action Plan discussed certain commercial growth focused to the core, and it envisions King Street as a vibrant place. And the municipal planning strategy encourages opportunities for development while minimizing conflicts between uses. Also encourages mixing compatible land uses to promote diversity and encouraging compact development to promote healthy neighborhoods. So staff recommend that town council for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the amendments to the land use bylaw as contained in Appendix A. But also, staff recommend that town council direct staff to conduct a review of the amendments on an annual basis for the first three years.
Great, thank you. I don't see any members of the public here today or any developers. So are there any questions from members of council on this? Council Graves.
So for $50, is that the permit? So for $50, somebody can just go and set up shop on King Street or Pleasant Street or Victoria or La Havre?
So there's $25 development permit and $25 building permit. That's also the case if someone wanted to go into a vacant building space that was there, if they weren't planning on changing use or doing any big building changes as well, they would be able to do that. And with this, it would be up to the business, or sorry, the land owner to require rent, we would assume. So there would be additional costs we would expect, but from the town, it would be the same as if they were to move into a vacant building.
But they're not paying a commercial tax rate or anything like that? They're just paying the permit?
Right, so the building owner would be subject to the tax that they would be paying. So we assume that would be taken into consideration. And then this would enable them to be there for 150 days versus a permanent business who would be there for a longer period of time.
You mentioned a couple of spots, or you showed a couple of pictures of some very nice structures. Are they in communities that were already doing well? Do you know what I mean? Like where they put, where they take it up neighborhoods where the business community is robust, the business is robust. And that when you've got an awful lot of people in a space anyways, then adding more people that space with the introduction of unique shopping experiences is good. But when you have a street like King Street where the retailers or the business community is suffering, so to speak, you know, things look like they're going to be turning around. There's some new businesses, and there's going to be some new landlords that may have the skill set to really shape King Street differently. But I'm just thinking of those existing businesses that are already there. And if someone was to come up and give them or sell an item that's similar to what they're selling, whether it's they're located on King Street or up in the plaza, that in terms of the competition, and I'm not against competition, but the same time, it's a small community with a small retail community with a lot of challenges, particularly with online shopping and all that other stuff. And it just, if I was a business owner, I might be a little bit concerned that the town is kind of working against what, working against me, if that makes any sense?
So. Sorry, there's a lot of different things that you touched on, so I'm not going to remember all the things I wanted to say. But I think I can speak for what the other places are experiencing. I'm not sure how they were before, but I think you touched on it. I think King Street or the downtown is maybe in a transition phase. But I think this just offers different opportunities. So perhaps there could be opportunities, this would provide opportunities for businesses that wouldn't necessarily work in those permanent structures, but may work to bring people to King Street, for example, in a different way. They just can't commit necessarily to being in a building that already exists for whatever reason. So it's just another opportunity to bring people there, and I think business clustering is a big thing. So like you said, competition is good, or maybe competition's the wrong word, but bringing more people to the same area will bring more people to everyone's business. And also, there's no rules right now that say someone can't move in beside someone who is selling the same product. So this is enabling similar uses to what already exists in the land use bylaw, just in a different space. If that makes sense.
Council McDonald?
I really like that we have, tend to have a very seasonal economy. So if you are renting bicycles or selling ice cream, paying the rent that is, that is kind of an average rental price on King Street would probably be impossible if you're a business of that nature. So I really like that it diversifies the opportunities that are available, opens up opportunities that probably don't exist at the moment. Or if they do exist, there is an unlevel playing field right now. I like that there's a little more control, a little more consistency, that it's, it's not just popping up and we're reacting to it after the fact. I like that we're looking at it in advance, and it may not be perfect, and we may need to adjust down the road. But we're creating opportunity, and we're being ready for it to come.
And I think also on that, even though we're promoting or enabling temporary commercial uses with this, we would like to see them become permanent. We're hoping that this would enable certain businesses to start up, like the Ohr House used to be across in the parking lot near Most Wanted, and they turned into a permanent business. So things like that is something that we would love to see from this.
That's kind of where, where I see this. And I don't disagree with you, Council Graves, or at least don't disagree with some of what you're saying. To me, this is similar to when we have someone who has a home-based business. What we hope is that they outgrow their home-based business and then find their way into a commercial space somewhere, right? We want them to be successful and grow, and outgrow the space, and then outgrow the space, and then outgrow the space. To me, this is, this is very similar. And going back to Council McDonald's example of if you, if you want to sell ice cream, you probably on day one aren't going to open up a commercial building ice cream parlor and sign a two- or three- or four-year lease. This gives you the opportunity to say, well, I'm going to start with maybe a little shack on someone's lot, private lot. And then if I have a really good summer, then maybe I'm going to move into, I'm going to try a summer in a building. And then maybe I'm serving hot chocolate in the winter, and that becomes a coffee shop, and you outgrow your space. King Street is turning around. And the example I use is it's, it's like a large ship, and it's taking, it takes a long time to turn around. And we do have some really cool things happening now. But I feel like this is just one more tool in the toolbox. But as we go through this, this is, this is our policy. This is our, these are our rules. And if we do see that we're going down a path that is going to be to the detriment of, of the commercial taxpayers or the established businesses because it's unfair, then it's our responsibility to look at that and to make sure it is a level playing field. So I, I'm just coming at this from, this is, this is hopefully a quick shot in the arm for King Street, for those who want to try. I had someone the other day say, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to rent kayaks. Well, that's really cool. I don't expect them to sign a $2,500 a month lease for the next two years in case someone doesn't want to rent kayaks. So I'd like to try it, I hope we can try it. And if it doesn't work, then we'll try something else, or if it's the wrong policy or by law, we'll change it back. That's the beauty of being flexible and being a town council that, you know, can pivot quite quickly. We've done that before, several times. It's just kind of balancing all the pieces, what you're saying, what Council McDonald's saying. Council McInnes?
I'm on the same page as Council Graves. I have some concerns. But we are going to review it after, what, the first three years, I believe. And, and hopefully, it'll maybe spur some new type of business down on King Street that will draw people to that area. But I do have concerns, but I'm prepared to live with it for the time being.
And I would encourage the business owners that are down there to be in touch with us and be in touch with staff. So if it's positively impacting your business, let us know. And if it's negatively impacting your business, let us know. But if we don't try new things because we like the way we've always done things, then we can just stop being the town that's the fastest-growing town in the province. And we can just stop being the town that's innovative, right? We didn't, we didn't just win this because we did things the way we always did them, right? So I, we've got to keep an eye on it, for sure. Council Thorburn?
I agree with you, Mayor. I, I see this as an opportunity for startups that will bring different businesses to town on a temporary basis, which could become permanent. Ice cream, school kids used to run years ago around on bicycles and pedal around the streets and ring their bell if you wanted ice cream. They could do that on King Street. Boats, in England, there was numerous places where you could rent a bicycle and drive around and drop them off at another location. I see this as, as a boost to our downtown and opportunity for growth rather than a detriment to our downtown core.
Mayor Tanner?
I've expressed some concerns about this previously, but I do obviously like the idea of an annual renewal, an annual review of the bylaw. I think that's great. I would beg property owners on King Street to give this a try, to lower their requested rent amounts and/or lease amounts and so on, to allow these startups to try business. And I think they'll be rewarded handsomely if they give it a shot. And I think that's the biggest impediment to some of these startups these days. When you're looking at rents along King Street, it's, it's outrageous how much they're requesting, and they're not willing to negotiate. I think business owners need to, property owners need to, to change their, their ways of thinking, honestly.
Well, then you, and then you solve your problem of the temporary business. If you have a rent that people can afford, then you all of a sudden have a permanent business.
We approved this here this evening. And a lot of people watch us on TV, but maybe some won't. Is there a marketing plan or some publication where people will know about this after tonight?
Well, normally with a land use by law amendment, we just go through the normal process. We wouldn't necessarily promote it in any certain way. But I think for this, it could be focused on in like an economic development way. I think it would be important to let people know that it's an option. And then especially like what you were saying, like letting the King Street business owners or Le Havre Street business owners, like letting us know how it's going. So I think we don't have anything in place right now, but it would be good to look into.
Any further comments? If not, someone prepared to make a motion. Council Thorburn?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the amendment of the land use by law as contained in Appendix A of Document 19J036B, and further that staff conduct a review of the amendments on an annual basis for the first three years.
Have a second, please. Council McDonald, further discussion? Actually, had a great discussion. Questions being called, all those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Have to officially close up everything, that's why we're up here. All right. Our next item is down in reports and recommendations. We have the town's technology plan and communication strategy.
I've got David Muse here with the Joint Services Board, and Patrick is as well. If council has any questions about the documents you have before you. There's two. The communication strategy, which sets out council's overall goals and objectives with respects to communications externally with the public, and kind of the guiding principles behind those communications. And the town's technology plan is about answering the question that council had with respects to, are we using technology within the organization to optimize our effectiveness and efficiencies within the organization? And how can we use technology in our communication strategy and plan, and how we engage with the public? So both documents are here tonight. I, I have a table that kind of outlines with the town's technology plan how we anticipate that we would implement that. So we'd be looking at our records management system and implementing that over a couple of years. That, that involves looking at laser feast software, developing a program system, electronically filing our documents. And the objective is to set up retention schedules and disposal requirements so that we can ensure the protection of our, our records and the disposal of them in accordance with council's policy with respects to records retention, and eliminate paper, storage space, and, and make file retrieval more efficient within the organization because it'll treat it as one organization as opposed to individual departments with their own filing structures. So we're looking at starting that this year and working at over the next few years. Procom financial software, there'd be a PO module as well as time and attendance and service order inventory. And we'll be starting some of that this year and exploring others in future years. And this will automate some of our processes with respects to purchasing, as well as how we track time and attendance as well. Office 365, that would be to explore Office 365, to look at how we could bring that together as a project management software to enable departments to work together and virtually, and share files, keep project statuses updated, and just ensure that we're working cohesively together on projects, virtually primarily. We'll also be exploring it for council, and looking at whether or not we want to look at Office 365 and SharePoint when it comes to council minutes and agendas and, and tracking tasks as well. Right now, we use eScribe, and that's not to say we would abandon that. It's just to say we would look at, does this system, which we're already paying for, offer us something in addition to what eScribe may or may not? We'd be looking at asset management software as part of our technology plan. We're required to have an asset management program in place. And that is a requirement of our federal gas tax funding. So software is a key component in that. What data do we collect, or attributes about our assets and our infrastructure? And how do we use that to integrate with our financial software and make decisions about how we fund and plan for infrastructure going forward? And then our phone system, which the Joint Services Board will be leading with staff, is looking at, is there a better system out there that will meet our needs than what we have now, whether it's from a cost perspective or a functional perspective? In terms of how we use technology to engage the public, and I know there's been a little bit of conversation about this one, but one of the things that council did identify is that you wanted to use technology in the sense of Wi-Fi, downtown Wi-Fi. That would provide free access throughout the King Street area. Look at information kiosk as well to allow the public to access visitor information, services and town information. And look at cameras throughout strategic areas within town that would be for traffic and weather purposes for, for public as well. So we're, we're presently looking at the, the Wi-Fi option with some work that engineering's doing and the Joint Services Board's involved in that. And I believe there has been a few questions about whether or not we still want to go down that road, given that there's a number of free Wi-Fi points throughout town, whether it's privately owned or the town, like our, our building here, for example. People sit outside on the bench, and they, they access Wi-Fi. So there's, there are, there are spots throughout the town where that's possible now. So it's a question of do we want to provide that in a broader, in a broader way? And I think David, David was asked to come, too, to speak to council specifically on that, that particular part of our technology plan. In terms of how we use technology with our communication strategy, this is about our URLs and our brand and controlling that, controlling how many Facebook pages we have out there, making sure that we have a consistent image and brand, and that everything filters through the town when it comes to pushing stuff out like that so that we can ensure that that's maintained. And Patrick did look at that within our communication strategy as well as ensuring that there's a protocol in place so that we can control those as they go out. And the popular one is looking at an app that would push people to our website and information that's on our website, but it would look like an app and provide some key information to visitors and residents alike. Look at 311 and how we can integrate that into that as well. So we have planned that within the, within our work plan as well for exploring that. And then in future years, over the next three years, looking at an app that we could implement that could push people to our webpage and use, and, and use the information that's already populated there. And, and our council meetings and event streaming, look at how we can improve our, our video quality. And we're starting to do some work on that, as well as stabilize our audio quality as well. So we're, we've got plans to do that. Some, some money in the budget this year to look at that and implement some changes, and then future years as well. Yeah.
That's a lot. Questions from members of council? Council Thorburn?
See you talking a lot there, Tammy. But has there been any thought of, and I think Michael brought this up a while ago, we're putting Wi-Fi on the new bus so that people travel on the bus, we're having access to that. So when the bus is ordered, maybe that could be part of the package?
It's possible. It's something we could explore if council wants to include, include that. The, the original talk was the King Street area, but Wi-Fi on the buses?
I think it's something that we've talked quite a bit about.
I think we've talked about it.
Wi-Fi on the bus. Because it gives us other infra, other access to information. I think as soon as you have Wi-Fi on the bus, then it's easier to do the, to show the bus in real time. And if you're going down the road and having an app, then people can use that app to also find, oh, the bus is almost here. I think it, I think that's, recall that conversation from another jurisdiction, that add Wi-Fi to their bus for the passengers, but then realize they can then use that to broadcast the location of the bus. So I, I think that would be worth putting in when we work the tender for the bus, if that's where it goes, or if it goes after when we do the ads. Other questions, Council, Deputy Mayor Tanner, first.
I had raised some concerns about downtown Wi-Fi. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering what the path forward is on that and how we will analyze whether that's a feasible item or not based on the budget allocated to that particular topic.
Is it David Muse's question? Would you like, Mr. Muse, would you mind coming down to the podium, please? I know you've got a nice loud, deep voice, but microphone's always better. If you don't mind.
Yes, I'm sorry, pardon me. Could you repeat the question?
Seriously? I had expressed some concerns about downtown Wi-Fi. I think at the time when we, we thought about doing free Wi-Fi in the downtown, it was probably, I don't know, six or seven years ago, maybe, I can't remember. But, you know, it was all the rage and so on and so forth. All the different towns and cities were doing it. And, you know, if you go to Lunenburg as an example, trying to get on their downtown Wi-Fi is a, is a battle in itself. And trying to maintain a decent connection is, is struggle as well. So I guess I'm wondering what the path forward is on this particular item, how you analyze it? How do you, how do you decide whether it's feasible or not? Whether the budget allocated to it is, is appropriate or not, and so on?
I will attempt very strongly to not over-answer this question.
Like I over-explained my question?
In 2017, the Joint Services Board attempted to assist the town in getting some Wi-Fi in a very specific region around the new park, which ultimately was not a successful project. And there were a number of reasons for that. Most notably, the equipment that was purchased at the time did not perform as advertised. But I think the, the biggest impediment to getting Wi-Fi in the downtown is the fact that all of the communications infrastructure on King Street runs behind the businesses on King Street. So you could not get a telephone into the park because there are no physical cables that carry either an Eastland or an Alliant signal into that area where you would then install a hotspot and provide public access. So the way we got around that issue, we were not originally aware of that situation, is the Wi-Fi access points were fed by a wireless signal, which is doable. And there's technology that will allow you to do that. The problem that we ran into at that time is so many businesses on King Street have multiple Wi-Fi access points already in place, that there's a lot of congestion in the Wi-Fi spectrum. So there's a limited number of channels that you can transmit on, on 2.4 gigahertz or 3. And when, when we've got two access points on the same channel, only one can talk at the same time. So the performance was suboptimal. So as far as how we go forward, you know, I've seen the budget. There's, there's not enough money in there to put in any sort of proper telecommunications infrastructure in the park. There's probably barely enough budget allocated for the equipment that would be required to provide service in the park. So there are some, there are some alternatives. A lot of, a lot of municipalities, municipalities that have successful Wi-Fi projects tend to layer it on top of an existing fiber optic network that they have built for their own purposes. So the ones that really work well, that made a fairly substantial investment in telecommunications infrastructure in their towns and cities, which then gives them an opportunity to layer on a Wi-Fi service with a, with a reliable wired connection. Municipalities that, that don't have the luxury of having that are either paying a service provider to provide points of presence around, around the town. Or, and I think if I, if I had a, a recommendation for the town of Bridgewater to consider... Or, and I think if I had a recommendation for the town of Bridgewater to consider, many municipalities are encouraging local businesses to provide Wi-Fi access within their facilities. I know on King Street, there are a number of them that already do. But I think where the town could provide some value and potentially shark out this whole process is to help coordinate that effort, either in the geographical location of King Street or perhaps even more broadly. So, I hope that answers your question.
So, how would you suggest moving forward with this? Having a company come in and research this, having you folks, well, it sounds like you've somewhat researched it already, in providing recommendations or?
At this point, I would feel most comfortable if we brought in someone that is primarily in the business of doing this, who's been through these challenges and can give us a more solid answer.
So, piggybacking on that, because I like, you know what I'm going with, right? I always like that the town seems to punch above its weight. We had that conversation today and I've alluded to this thing that's sitting here about how we punch above our weight. So, our country is poised to deploy 5G. It's got to be tested somewhere. To me, it doesn't make sense to test it in a large city like Toronto or Montreal where you've got a whole bunch of chaos going on. So, does it make sense to, in all intensive purposes, offer up our community, our downtown core, to a company that is trying to test and deploy 5G and use our street as a testament to see if we can kind of mix the best of both worlds here? We need, or we still want, potentially, Wi-Fi in our downtown. We don't have the infrastructure. There's a brand-new technology that has to be tested somewhere. I was just at a conference in February where they're sticking them all in what looked like old antique light poles and they just cut the section out in the center, stick the 5G network in there and put it back together and you'd never know it was there. The signal only travels, I think they said, 100 feet and they put them in every pole and they were using them for testing autonomous cars. So, I'm just throwing that out there, I guess, maybe I'm a bit of a dreamer, but it's got to be tested somewhere and I'm always a fan of saying, why not Bridgewater? If you're going to bring someone in, let's try something a little cooler.
So...
No pressure.
My response to that would be, who's going to connect to it? Because we don't have 5G devices in the town of Bridgewater. Nobody's walking around with one in their pocket.
Not yet.
Not yet. But I think it begs the question, which I'm not certain I really know the answer to, is what is the expected outcome from providing this service? Are we doing it to be technology leaders? You know, with the smart city trophy in front of you, I think that's probably a component of it, you know, or is there, are we trying to do economic development? Are we trying to assist, you know, people of lower income to be more connected? I think understanding what council's desire from this service is would help us. We certainly need to know that if we're going to bring in a third party to give us recognition.
Well, I think it's a discussion we need to probably flesh out a little bit more as a council to see, to Deputy Mayor's point, is this still a priority, free Wi-Fi in downtown versus having it on the bus, does that solve that problem? Going back to smart cities, we have a technology requirement in our smart cities application. It is smart cities. So, through Energized Bridgewater, we are obligated to provide some kind of technical connection to monitor how energy is used within the community as we go through this. And so, at some point, we do need to have the ability to connect to, well, right now it's residential, which, no problem, there's fiber up around the town, but when we go to the next phases, how do we deal with King Street? How do we deal with those pockets of the town that might not have access to it? So, if it's not 5G, it's something, but I was just trying to look for an opportunity that someone's looking, and we don't have to pay as much because we can get the best technology and be the guinea pigs. But it's not that, that's fine, it's just, we kind of want it all. We need to, with the council, really determine where we want to go with when it comes to free Wi-Fi. Because I'm with the deputy mayor. You go to many communities where they have free Wi-Fi, you're not actually getting free Wi-Fi because you don't get to go on the Wi-Fi. Other questions on the town's technology plan and technology and communication plan? I think we do well on the communication side.
The app, and the app is to connect to the website? You said it's kind of to push people to the website?
Well, you wouldn't know you're on the website, but it's basically, it's picking the information up from the website.
Okay, so does that require changes to the website itself?
Won't know till we, Patrick shaking his head, no.
Just to jump down really quickly, the answer is no. Digital Fusion built the website to be fully mobile compatible and, you know, you could pop it up on your smartphone right now and it would automatically orient itself and be visually what we would want to improve. It presents itself as an app for all intents and purposes.
So, there may just be some features that we're adding over time that are usable through that?
That's right.
Website thing?
Yeah, so an example of that, that the CEO noted earlier, would be the 311 option where if someone had a request for service, wanted to pass along information about a portal or something like that, they would have the ability to do that. We currently really don't have that active on our website, but that would be the kind of components that we could build out.
Okay, great, thanks.
Just noting that the motion that we're going to bring forward is to endorse implementation of the technology community plan. Is there, or communication plan, is there, do we want to move forward that? Are there enough questions that we have over the deployment of Wi-Fi that that has to be deferred or is that something that we can still pass this motion and address as we go?
I would say if you pass the motion to accept this plan, what would be, before we would move ahead with Wi-Fi, we'd be having a session with council, a discussion session probably, just to make sure that we're clear on what the objective is. Is it just, as David said, there's a couple of things, just public access to help serve the population that doesn't have access to Wi-Fi or economic development or all above? So, we make sure that we know what you're trying to achieve before we go with the final solution, because I know staff are working on some stuff right now that we may put a hold on just until we make sure that that is going to meet what you want to do.
So, I just want to make sure that we're clear that if council does pass this, that we're not all of a sudden going to go down the road of spending $16,000 on Wi-Fi or whatever it was and then realize that that's not exactly what we want to do. There'll be some checks and balances.
Yeah, I think Wi-Fi is the phrase, but there's a few things under that we need to figure out.
Fair enough. Any other questions? Someone for a big motion? Councilor Fager?
Yes, Your Honor, that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the implementation of the town's technology plan and communication strategies as presented in document 19-048.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor, those opposed, motions carried, thank you. Next item is policy 85, corporate sponsorship and naming rights. Thank you, David. So, we had a little bit of a last second...
Patrick can explain that.
...call with this one. Yeah, you better explain this one.
So, we'll start with the high level for council's benefit and quickly go through why we're coming forward with some policy revisions. In a nutshell, the intention with revisions is primarily to make the corporate sponsorship policy more flexible and allow the town, any particular staff, to react more quickly when we have small sponsorship opportunities that are presented with businesses or local community partners. The way the policy is currently worded, essentially, any proposal coming from the community to the town has to go through council. There's no minimum level threshold. It ultimately has to wind up here. And so, if it's a small sponsorship opportunity, you know, saving the value of somewhere between 100 and up to $5,000, it has to go through the process of coming to council. So, you're looking at a minimum two-week waiting period and realistically, you're probably talking closer to a month before the town would be able to act on that. So, we've modified the existing sponsorship policy to reflect the creation of a threshold. Where basically, senior managers would have the discretion to accept and approve sponsorship policies at the value of up to $1,500. Then there's a second threshold where the CEO would have the discretion and authority to approve sponsorship arrangements in value up to $5,000. And then anything over $5,000 would go through the process of coming to council for formal approval. That would also apply to any proposals that would include naming rights for town facilities. So, anything that would involve naming rights would automatically come to council. And the other matter that we received some information on late this afternoon also involves the existing policy refers to alcohol. And what we're suggesting from a staff standpoint is that we want to refine that and the report before you specifically references controlled substances. Now, we did talk to Public Health last week because they have an interest in alcohol use in particular in the community, but they're also keeping their eye on marijuana use these days as well. And Public Health came back and actually suggested, again, late this afternoon, that controlled substances, which is the phrase used in the draft you had before you, be altered and read regulated substances. That then becomes, it makes the phrasing consistent with Health Canada and the Act that governs that sort of thing and it still effectively acts as a catch-all for alcohol, tobacco, narcotics, basically everything that we would want to have council have direct input on. So, if an alcohol or tobacco or whatever the case may be, a company that pedals those wares wanted to have some sort of sponsorship arrangement with the town, council would ultimately have the say on whether or not that sponsorship arrangement was appropriate. Related to that, council may also wish to consider using substances and products as well. It was pointed out that the phrase substances doesn't necessarily catch something like firearms. You know, that's something that's certainly part of our culture in this county, there are firearms retailers here and that may be something that if an arms dealer were to want to enter into a sponsorship agreement with the town, the council may want to have authority over that as well. So, that's certainly something that we can amend on the fly tonight if that's council's direction or we could come back in a couple of weeks if that's the direction as well.
Attorney counsel.
I'm a little bit curious about what else falls into regulated products, with tattoos fall into regulated products. How far does that stretch? And just sitting here thinking about it quickly, I'm not coming up with a whole lot, but I'm sure that there are a whole lot that just aren't coming to mind in a split second. And when we say controlled products, or sorry, controlled subs, or regulated substances, sorry, does that mean, if I try to come up with an example, Beer Fest came to town, that doesn't mean that we will not sponsor the event coming to town? That means it's going to come to council and a decision will be made here?
That's 100% correct, yes.
I had two questions. To me, regulated products, to me, my first question was, could that be a car or a truck? Like, these are things that require licensing and they're regulated by the province. Does that mean that we have those things? When does that stop? And the other was, if talking about sponsorship by a company that sells a regulated substance, does that mean that if someone like PharmSave wanted to come and sponsor, that that has to then go through the process of coming to council?
So, in my research, I do know that pharmacies are exempt from that.
Okay. Thank you.
I would say that if council, the existing policy has the controlled alcohol, basically, and we're expanding, yeah, we're expanding that to recognize that cannabis has been legalized, there's other things that are regulated as well that kind of fall within that theme, that we would say are easy to fit within the intent of the original policy. If you move into products, perhaps if you're interested in going there, that you would probably want to defer your decision tonight on this policy so that we could make sure that we have the wording and understand what the implications are of expanding it to include products. So, that'd be my recommendation to council.
Well, we could pass a motion, if we pass this now, that it does cover off the substances.
Correct.
Right?
With the change of controlled to regulated.
Right. It just doesn't include products.
That's right.
Okay.
Counselor Thorburn.
Pat, when you was talking, you said about staff up to 15 and the CEO five, did you mean 25? I think it was 25 for the CEO to sign up for.
I think it was 15 to...
15 to 5,000.
Yeah, and then over that, council.
Yeah, okay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Patrick, I guess the wording is a bit confusing for me. Members of town, senior management team, does that mean a senior management team member can act individually or does it have to come to the team as a whole? And the reason I ask is if an individual were making the decision on their own, their value of what that 1,500 might, what the item might be, might be very different from another team member's, you know?
Yeah, that's correct, Deputy Mayor. We specifically included the word team in there so that the intention would be that any sponsorship proposal would come to the senior management group and that also guarantees that the CEO will be aware that the proposal has been received as well.
Perfect.
Good question. Thanks, Ray.
Just thinking of naming rights, does that mean there's no tendering process anymore?
There is. That tendering process would still be in place. If, and, yeah, and one of the reasons why we wanted to, you know, consider increasing the flexibility of this policy as well is because it's very infrequent that the town would tender out the naming rights for facilities, you know, the rare time that we've got a new building or a new park or a new facility that we want to go out with. And because of that, we also don't want to have a policy that deters our corporate community or our nonprofit community from coming to us with a proposal. And it was kind of felt that the existing policy did that. We haven't, you know, it's very infrequent that we've received those proposals from the community unsolicited and frankly, we'd like to encourage that.
I was thinking more of events, where somebody comes in to sponsor an event.
Yeah, that's correct. That would continue. So, Canada Day on Le Havre, Christmas on Le Havre, those have gone through the tendering process before and that would continue.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Can we bring this forward or can we defer it if you have more questions? Don't all have to, does anyone have more questions?
Is there going to be some clarity in regards to controlled substances?
If you wish to have us do some research into what would be included in products, then, because the suggestion here is the policy states controlled substances, we're being, it's being suggested by Public Health that that be changed to regulated substances, but that it then be expanded to include products as well, which takes us into a different world a little bit. So, if you're interested in pursuing that, then I would defer a decision and direct staff to bring back some further information and wording to that effect. And if you're not interested, then the policy's here just focused on substances only.
That's really, counsel, attorney counsel.
In the section four, the authority to approve sponsorship, I think that's great. It allows us to react faster, but I don't see anything in the policy that kind of provides guidelines around what the expectation is that we receive when we give sponsorship. So, do we receive, do we expect that there's going to be some sort of public recognition when we approve sponsorship? Or do we expect that, you know, our name's going to be on something for 30 days or there's no kind of guidelines around that? Do you perceive that as being a problem? Does it make it difficult for staff to say, yes, this is the type of sponsorship we're looking to participate in and this is not the type we're looking to participate in?
If you go back to section two and look at section 2.1D, it gives a definition for sponsorship and states that it can include money, value-in-kind or a combination of money and value-in-kind in exchange for advertising, marketing or promotional considerations as negotiated as part of a sponsorship agreement. So, again, we didn't want to be overly restrictive with the policy. We've got a really great creative community and we, you know, want to invite them and encourage them to come to us with ideas. And so, while there's sort of a baseline in there for the expected exchange, we didn't want to be too prescriptive in that.
And, sorry, can I...
Yep.
Is there anywhere where we need to kind of create a line between what is sponsorship and what is a grant? Is that clear enough in the policy that staff might, staff aren't going to be questioning their decision and where it should land? Because I know we've questioned it at times.
A grant in regards to...
Where it should go to grant to, grant to organizations rather than be sitting on your desk looking for your...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would really be outgoing money. We're talking more about the town receiving benefit from that relationship. So, grant to organizations would still remain a totally separate process.
I think an example of a sponsorship would be this, over the holiday season, we had the Chamber of Commerce, I believe it was, that wanted to sponsor a weekend of free bus rides or a week during the holiday season. we had the Chamber of Commerce, I believe it was, that wanted to sponsor a weekend of free bus rides or a week during the holiday seasons. So that's money coming to us and we, they get to advertise on our bus, right? So that's, they sponsored that, right? So that's sponsoring an event or transit in that case.
Yeah, and similarly, the Le Havre Credit Union did the Free Sundays in December as well. And that was, we were able from a staff standpoint to act on that because the existing policy states that if a program is already being approved by council, then staff has the latitude to work within that program. And that had been done so already via the transit program. But we essentially want to make sure that we've got the ability that if something else comes before us, that we've got the ability to either act on it quickly or to move it up the chain to the C A O and the council.
So let's break this into two pieces. Does anyone have any issues with thresholds that have been changed? Sounds like we're okay with that. So the next question is going to regulated substances, right? Substances being the key word. That's how it stands now. If you're okay with that, then we move forward. If we want to explore what has been, what we've received today, which is a call saying it should be regulated products, we need more information.
Yeah, Your Worship, I'll just correct you on that. The social, the health, public health authority recommended the change from controlled substances to regulated substances. That was their concern. They wanted to make sure that, legalistically, that the catch-all to include narcotics, alcohol, drugs was there in the wording.
So where did the products come from?
That came from staff's second thought.
Oh, that's from you.
Patrick.
They, public health did mention firearms in their communication with us. And then Jessica and I subsequently had a chat and said, maybe we should at least bring it to council's attention that we may wish to consider products as well. We don't have to at this time.
Okay. So health was just going to regulated substances.
Correct.
That's what you're saying before, lines up with Health Canada.
Yeah.
So if we want to explore, Pat's full idea. Sorry, buddy. If we want to explore the regular products, then we probably need more information. If you want to stick with just regulated substances, then we could probably move forward today because I don't hear anyone having any issues with that wording. But if you need more time, yes, Councilor Gess.
Products. There's something happening in October with respect to cannabis. You're going to have products, baked products.
It would be the substances, the controlled substances within the product. So I would think it would be covered under that. Yeah. It's a good question.
We're interested in further exploring what products kind of means, what that captures. Can that be, can this be approved and we look at that?
Sure. Yeah, you could do that too. Yeah.
Okay.
Ready to go?
Yep.
All right. I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approved Amendment to Policy 85 for corporate sponsorship and naming rights as presented in Document 19-0538, effective immediately.
Seconded, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner, any further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. So we're going to put you on the hot seat, Mr. Hurdle. Next item is notice of a policy change. Policy 72, disposal surplus equipment, policy and procedure. So for the next number of these, we're giving notice of policy.
So we'll be considering it at the June 10th council meeting. And these ones are just housekeeping in nature, but it's, council has to give themselves notice.
Yeah. So who's prepared to make that motion? Council for Jure?
Yes, Your Worship, that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the June 10th, 2019 council meeting, housekeeping amendments to policy 72 will be considered.
Seconded by Councilor McDonald. Questions?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. Next item is again a notice for policy 78, what am I, policy 79, purchasing and tender, tendering policy. Who's prepared to make a motion?
Deputy Mayor Tanner. I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that as of the, that at the June 10th, 2019 council meeting, amendments to policy 79, purchasing and tendering will be considered to enable the C A O to make procurement decisions for annual recurring quotations and/or tender requests for goods and services costing over $25,000.
Have a second, please. Council Thorburn, I'll also just step in here and encourage, if council has questions or if members of the public are watching have questions over what that means, please send your questions to the C A O so that we have those ready to go. Okay. We have a mover and a seconded. All those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. And our last notice here is proposed policy for wastewater reserve. If someone is prepared to give such notice, Council for Jure.
Yes, that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the June 10th, 2019 council meeting, the implementation of draft wastewater reserve policy will be considered.
Seconded by Councilor McDonald. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Tanner.
So one of the things that struck me over the weekend was why we would have a wastewater reserve in the first place, given where our infrastructure sort of sits and how much work we have to do to kind of get to, back to square one, so to speak, I guess. So if we have a reserve, why wouldn't we be spending it instantly, so to speak, versus actually having a reserve?
Well, I think, well, the history of this is that we've been increasing, the council has increased the sewer rate every year, acknowledging that we're far short of wastewater funding. So in 1819, for the first year, the sewer revenue exceeded the direct expenses, not including depreciation or principal on debt or anything like that that really should be covered. So it exceeded, the revenue exceeded the expenses. So the approval was to put the difference in a reserve. And, you know, we could be drawing it out immediately, but I think the thought was to build a bit of a reserve for some of the larger projects that we know are coming.
Okay. That's a good question to ask. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. Next item is building inspection services. We've got an M O U between the town and District of Lunenburg.
So we have a vacancy in engineering and public works with a building fire inspection position. It's a 12-month leave so that a person would come back in April 2020, we hope. And we tried to recruit because ideally we'd have a full-time person fill that position, but we were not successful in finding anyone. We need someone who is a level-two certified building inspector so that person could do both residential and commercial industrial-type building inspections. Right now, we have one person performing all of our inspections and that's not reasonable to expect for that to exist for a full 12 months. There's vacations, sick leave, all that time. So we've had, we solicited other municipal units to see who could provide some backup support to us. And most of them are tapped right out. The District of Lunenburg, we were able to have some discussions with them. They've agreed to provide that backup. The M O U should look familiar to you because it's the same M O U that the town presented the District of Lunenburg with about two years ago, I believe. The rate is 1.49 of what the average inspector's salary is. So that would cover all their overhead, the office, the vehicle, all that stuff. And then we'd pay a kilometer rate as well, so mileage for that individual as well. And this would be as they have the resources available, so they're not going to guarantee us every day. But when we have that vacancy, when our inspector goes on vacation or is sick and we need to have someone come in, they have the resources, they'll provide that support to us. So the M O U is there for council to consider. And if council is agreeable, approve. And then we're required to also appoint the building inspectors to be building inspectors for the purposes of administering or implementing this M O U. They, you have to have them appointed under the Building Code Act.
So we'll have the first motion and then the second motion. Are there any questions, Councilor Graves?
Does insurance come into play in this?
Yeah, the M O U covers off that insurance as well. So we're required, if, let's see, the, we require that they have insurance and they require that we have insurance. They maintain insurance coverage. And if there's any negligence or anything like that, like, we're not going to be, we're not going to be held liable for that. And, yeah, while we're engaged in, that's the case. If, if there's a, an instance here where we end up in court, of course, our legal fees, we have to pay for all that stuff ourselves, right? Because they're representing us, so it's us.
Question, it says on a need basis, so would you be giving them notification when our staff is on vacation and advance notice?
We know, we know some plan vacation now, and so they've been given those dates. And if, but if there's a sick day or, you know, a last-minute request for time off, then they'll try to accommodate that as best they can. And they may have a sickness on their end and not be able to accommodate a day that we've already scheduled.
So it can work both ways as far as.
Mr. Hopkins will not be allowed to be sick for the next.
Don't, not going to.
Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? You guys can duke it out over who's going to make the first motion. Councilor Graves, why don't you make the first?
Please.
Okay.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the memorandum of understanding between the municipality of the District of Lunenburg and the town of Bridgewater respecting the provision of building inspection services to the town of Bridgewater as presented in Document 19-060 and authorize execution of the same.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Graves. Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor, those opposed. Councilor Graves, do you like to make the next motion, please?
Yeah, I'd love to. Thank you.
You seemed so eager the last time.
Yeah, really. Pursuit to memorandum of understanding between the municipality of the District of Lunenburg and the town of Bridgewater respecting the provision of building inspection services. Town Council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Michael Beavis, Earl Woodsworth, and Kyle Wynott as building officials under section 5.2 and 5.3 of the Building Code Act effective upon execution of same memorandum of understanding.
Thank you, Colonel. Seconded, please. Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. Another discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is donations to South Shore Fieldhouse Society. So this is just, this happens from time to time. This is, I always feel compelled to remind the public, this is not the town making a donation to the Fieldhouse. Remember, the public has made a donation to the Fieldhouse. The town receives those and then sends that money to the Fieldhouse Society. So is someone prepared to make that motion? Councilor Graves?
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve a grant in the amount of $60,500 to the South Shore Fieldhouse Society for multi-use facility on Glen Allen Drive.
Thank you. Have a second, please. Council for Jure. Discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. It's probably a good time as we're live streaming on Facebook to, I know a number of us have received calls or emails from people concerned about the, certainly from calls I've received, about the walking track not being open this summer. So certainly the direction that I've been giving those members of the public is to contact members of the board of the Fieldhouse and express that. It's in everyone's best interest that they know because you're their customers. And we don't have the ability to make the tracks stay open. But certainly, I would think that the board would want to know. I had somebody call me and say there's between 80 and 100 seniors that actively walk that track. And I would hope that they contact the board so that the board knows they have 80 to 100 people. And maybe there's an opportunity there as they progress to the summer when there's the potential for the track to be closed. And I know they did just announce that they're working on fine-tuning that. So it also doesn't mean that it's necessarily closed. So I would ask that people reach out to the Fieldhouse itself to get some answers if they have questions. Because we don't want a speculation or rumor running around. They're working very hard over there to keep this facility open. So I would ask people to contact them. Next item is tender 19-03E, a newer, 2019 or newer, half-ton four-by-four truck. Have we, when was the last time we bought a Dodge pickup truck? This is.
Many years.
Many years. That's what stood out for me and all that. That's what stood out for me was.
What stood out to me was there was only one.
Yeah, one bid.
One bid?
Yeah.
Not from this area?
No, that's sad. That's sad to me. Someone's.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, please.
I move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award tender 19-03E-2019 or newer half-ton four-by-four supercab truck to Potchay Motors Limited for a 2019 Dodge Ram 1500 S L T supercab truck for a total price of $50,697.18, including 15% H S T, $45,973.96, including net H S T.
Have a second, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Sounds like a nice truck.
So is it a unique vehicle that can't be sourced anywhere in Nova Scotia? Like, why is it so, eight packages out in one response? It just doesn't, seems silly.
Yeah, I'm not sure why there was only one response.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't.
There's nothing unique.
Yeah, I didn't think so. It's a little frustrating. Like, someone's, we're buying a $50,000 truck from a company that's not in our area, but there are multiple companies that sell $50,000 trucks in our area and it's.
Just a quick, will we be able to get it serviced locally?
Yes. I'd like to know why people are, like you said, eight packages out, one in. Why?
Can we ask? Can we go and ask that question? What's not.
I guess we can as councils. We can have that conversation with people in our circles. So, you know, we, most of us know most of the owners or managers of the firms. It's probably what we should be doing. Because it's not, you know, it's not coming in at $25,000 and being a price that nobody else can compete with. I would think that this is, this is not, it's not, like you said, it's not a unique truck. Doesn't seem to be a unique price. I don't know. It's frustrating. Any questions? Questions being called. All those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. Okay, the next item is tender 19-02E Dominion Street Water and Street Upgrade Phase Four.
The last phase.
The last phase.
Are we sure?
Hopefully, the last phase.
We're going to get it done before I leave council?
Yes.
Oh, now, never mind. Yeah, so this is the water, street upgrade down Dominion Street and some work on Pleasant as well. Anything to add?
Perhaps it's a little confusing report and I can try to provide some clarity to council.
That would probably be good, yes.
So on the 8th of May, we received three tenders for the work for the Dominion Street Upgrade, which included work along Pleasant Street as well. The total budget is $805,415 of that is the towns and the $390,000 is the P S Cs. So the work along Pleasant Street, we added that in the capital budget for this year in efforts to capture some of the inflow and infiltration that's going into the town sewer system along Pleasant Street. Because the tender results exceeded the approved budgets, more so for P S C than the town, we included some options for council's consideration in the report. We, other options that may not be clear is that if the P S C were to install the water main along Pleasant Street, the additional cost to the town to replace the sidewalk and curb would be about $60,000. And that's in addition to option two. And if the P S C did not install the water main along Pleasant Street, the additional cost to do the sidewalk curb and the portion of street that the P S C would have paid for if they were to do that water main is about $105,000.
So my understanding, Larry, is that because this is a combined project, both P S C and the town, because the P S C is over budget, the capital portion is over budget regardless of what option, there's a requirement to go to the U A R B to get approval for that budget overreach because it affects rate. And therefore, if council is interested in proceeding with. And therefore, if council is interested in proceeding with the tender, um, because it includes the two pieces together, you would want to do that subject to the approval of the PSC for that rate. Because if, if they don't approve that, then, um, that was, that's the whole purpose of Dominion Street, right, is, is the water main. So we would want to, um, not award the entire tender in that case, and then we might have to go back to the drawing board or revisit the, the issue. So it would be a subject to the approval of the UARB, even the town's portion, just because it's a combined project, you can't break them out.
And how long will it take?
It, it would be at, well, first of all, the town has to make that submit, or the PSC has to make that submission, and then it would be at the discretion of the UARB. I'm not sure how long it will take for them to respond.
We were going to contact Mid Valley to see how long they'll hold their prices for, too, understanding that that's, what, sixty days that they're guaranteeing their price for now? And if we push it further into the construction season because of having to go to the UARB, we'd want to make sure that those prices can be maintained.
Councilor Thorburn? When reading that document, we have to go to the UARB anyway.
That's right.
Correct.
Yep.
We have no choice. And if I, I see an email, we've talked about going with option one versus option two from the PSC side of things today, right?
Yes.
Do we have the details on that?
I don't believe it's been consolidated, the results.
I believe they were leaning towards going.
For the full thing.
For the option one.
Yeah, that's my understanding, yeah.
To pass this motion, option two should be amended to show option one then, is what I'm saying.
To show all the work being completed. And what would that put the town over in terms of the budget that they budgeted for?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty?
Forty-five thousand. Forty-three, five hundred.
So the PSC would be a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred, and then the town would be around forty-five thousand over.
But the PSC was forty-three thousand dollars over before that.
That's right.
So it's, you're talking sixty-eight thousand and change for the PSC.
Yep.
Yeah.
What is the wish of council?
Who can make the motion?
You, go ahead, please.
I would move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award tender nineteen dash zero-two E Dominion Street Water and Street Upgrade, Phase Four to Mid Valley Construction nineteen ninety-seven, limited to complete all work specified along Dominion Street in addition to installation of ninety meters of new sanitary sewer and storm pipe on Pleasant Street for an estimated total cost of eight thirty-one, nine seventeen, ninety-one net HST. And I want to see option one, subject to the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board with respect to associated water rates.
I think it's nine fifty-six.
Okay, it's the, the amount has to be amended to.
Okay.
It is nine hundred and fifty-six, nine hundred and seventeen?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's the full, uh, uh.
Right, all right.
So, just, uh.
I'll, I'll read that amendment.
Nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-one cents.
Yes.
And before I second that, that's a four-meal deal.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's option two.
That's option one.
No.
And then.
The document's option two.
Oh, okay, I thought.
Correct. It's confusing because the PSC document is option one.
Yeah.
We are going with the town's option two.
All right, but that includes the option one from PSC?
Correct.
All right.
That includes sidewalks?
Nine, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-one cents.
Yeah, second.
Seconded by. Correct. That's seconded by Councilor McGinnis.
That includes paving and sidewalks, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, the formula, yeah.
Everything.
There's no question that Pleasant Street needs some TLC.
Yeah.
Um, both sidewalk and road, so it's always nice to have them done together.
Ready for the question?
You have, look like you have a question.
So, well, so, uh, well, never mind, there's a subject to, it's fine.
Yeah, subject to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, next item is license request under bylaw one hundred and eleven gravel pits and excavation, which we need to do when someone is doing some work. Do you want to add to that?
I can, I can open this up.
Something that comes to council very often.
No, not at all, not, not in my time here. I'm not sure when the last request.
No, I don't remember.
Came through, I think it was for a property on North Street. Um, so outside of a permitted development, a property owner may request a license to operate gravel pit or, in this case, uh, make an excavation, um, on their property. Such a license is good for one year. So a property owner, uh, owns lands beyond the end of, of Riverview Drive. He wishes to clear the lands, grub, and remove surface layer material, so soil, rocks. Um, and just to be clear, this is a, an excavation license and not, not a gravel pit license. So, uh, if, if the bylaw reads, there are, there are two separate licenses that could be issued, and, and this request is for an excavation license. The license carries a fifty-dollar annual fee and is renewable upon request. Such renewals would also come to council. Uh, otherwise, within six months of license expiration, the lands must be filled and covered, so essentially restored. So, staff recommend that council approve the issuance of the excavation license at the site that includes its twelve properties under the ownership of Dwayne Richards in the area southwest of Riverview Drive.
Thank you. Any questions before we put a motion in order? Mayor Tanner?
So, give me an example. Why would someone excavate and then obviously be required to then put it all back, so to speak?
If that individual's looking for some, Phil, uh, if they want to move some of the excavated material from that site to another site that they may be working on because they, they are also a contractor.
Okay. Is this? Question?
Was this going to be extended, do you think, into another year? It has to be renewed every year? Is this an ongoing thing, or is it a one-time?
Uh, the, the license is good for a year, uh, so it's renewable upon request. I don't know if it will be requested, if that will be requested.
Someone prepared to make a motion?
I think the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the issuance of, uh, an excavation license in accordance with chapter one eleven, gravel pits and excavation by law at the site that includes twelve properties under the ownership of Dwayne R. Richards in the area southwest of Riverview Drive outlined in document nineteen dash zero-six-seven.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Fergier. Discussion?
Question?
Questions may call, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, next item is our first intake of the fiscal year for grants organizations. The list is there. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Kind of looking over our grants committee there?
Uh, before I do, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest with the Bridgewater Barracudas where I sit on the board.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion, Your Worship.
Please, and thank you.
I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grants to Organization Committee and award grants for the May first, two thousand and nineteen intake period as follows. Art Happening Afterglow Festival, twenty-five hundred dollars. Blue Nose Coastal Action Foundation, five thousand dollars. Bridgewater Farmers Market, five hundred dollars. Bridgewater Fire Department Band, five thousand dollars. Lurdeburg County Fiber Trail Association, two hundred and fifty dollars. Lunenburg Lime Group, eleven hundred and fifty dollars, one thousand cash, and one hundred and fifty dollars in kind. Pine Grove Outdoor Play Association, one thousand dollars. And the Second Story Women's Shelter, two hundred and fifty dollars, and the YMCA, three thousand dollars. And further, let decision regarding Bridgewater Baseball Association, Association request be deferred pending receipt of additional information.
You have a second, please? Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. Discussion? Questions? Cap, uh, Mayor Tanner?
It seems like we chat about this every year, um, and I know probably what the answer's going to be, but, uh, for example, Blue Nose Coastal Action Foundation, it's an annual request, and it's an annual grant, and why doesn't that come into a departmental budget? And, and obviously, I think it's engineering that uses that data, or has the intent of using that data. Why isn't that part of your annual budget, Larry?
I'm sorry, I only heard half of what you said.
I can, I can.
Two times.
It is going to be.
It is going to be.
It was too late this year, couldn't afford, but it's going to be in future years.
Yeah.
Now you know, Larry.
Would that same thing would apply to the Afterglow? We've been doing that for a year after year. That should be part of some of that's budget, so. I wouldn't have to come, keep coming back.
Yeah, and just for clarification, on the BayCaf one, it'd be almost like we were contracting for services as opposed to a grant, right? Um, and that's how we would have to treat that, or it would still be considered a grant.
Sure.
Right? Because we just don't hand over money that way. Same with Afterglow, even if you move it into recreation, it's still a grant. It wouldn't be, um, because it's a nonprofit organization unless we were contracting for some type of service from them. So you, you'd have to put it there. And I think you went through an exercise of moving all your grants, didn't you, to consolidate it, so you knew what you were spending on grants?
Yeah, and we, we do have to report on grants.
Yeah.
Under the MGA, so we have to make sure we know where they are.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be the same thing as the YMCA, every year we do the same thing.
Yes, it's still considered a grant because they're.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Fergier's first.
Just a comment in regards to birding, the second story is a women's center, not a shelter. Huge difference.
Okay.
So if we are contracting for BayCaf to do this testing for us, does that have to go to RFP, or is it under that threshold?
Um, we'd have to look at that to see if, if they had some, like, they've been doing the, the collection for, like, we'd have to look at the parameters of that. Uh, that's just, giving that out as an example of, you know, if we don't do it that way, we'd still have to consider it to be a grant. But engineers looked at the data and found it to be useful data that was being collected. So, we would, yeah.
And for those of you who do not know who the Lunenburg County Fiber Trail Association is, they're knitters and yarners, uh, who are having a big gathering, I believe it's in New Germany or in that area, this summer. Wonderful organization.
Thank you. I appreciate you explaining that. Uh, anyone else have questions?
Question.
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And thank you, Councilor Fergier, for declaring a conflict, full transparency. Uh, under business arising unfinished business, we have, uh, insurance budgets. And this comes back to our, I guess, our, our budget deliberations where we assign things.
That's correct. Um, at the time, uh, council passed the, the two thousand and nineteen, twenty budget, um, we knew that there was going to be a reduction in insurance premiums, we just didn't know what the allocation was going to be among departments. So that information is now available. It's in Appendix A, and it's resulted in some significant swings among the departments. Um, a, a big savings in police, um, wastewater is up quite significantly. And as a result of the fact that wastewater is up because we're using the transfer to reserve that we talked about earlier as a balancing number, the, the reduction, there'll be a reduction in the transfer to the reserve within wastewater so that it's all still balanced. So the end result of that is that we have, um, thirty-one thousand dollar surplus, which we're suggesting we would just transfer to a general operating reserve.
Okay. Questions to the Director of Finance before we have a motion?
Yes, Worship, I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Director of Finance and approve operating budget changes as outlined in Appendix A of document nineteen dash zero-six-two.
Thank you, seconded by Mayor Tanner. Any further? Oh, yes.
Only comment, anyone thinks that the Joint Service Board doesn't do a great work, they should take again. That's a substantial savings to our town, especially to our police department.
Yeah, police had a huge impact on police.
So it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a, was a very worthwhile exercise.
Yeah, sure, sure. Thanks for raising that. Uh, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Our last item is, uh, again, a notice. Give me a notice. Um, this is regarding the facade program, and then there's another motion after that. So, um, let's deal with the first one, which is to give the notice, and then we can discuss the second one. Councilor Fergier?
Yes, Your Worship. Uh, the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section forty-eight of the Municipal Government Act that at the June tenth, two thousand and nineteen council meeting, the implementation of a new facade improvement policy will be considered, which will provide grants to improve and beautify public facades of buildings in the downtown business district.
Thank you, seconded by. Well, you guys are sleeping here. It's just, it's just after eight o'clock.
The game's on, though, isn't it?
Seconded by Councilor McGinnis. Any discussion on the notice?
Question?
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And the next is to, uh, endorse the recommendation of staff, uh, and the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee approve the application of facade program for four fifty-five King Street. Can you remind me which business that is?
Sunny Wasons.
Sunny Wasons, okay, Sunny Wasons.
And this application is in keeping with the proposed program that's on the agenda, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Your Worship. Uh, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee and approve the application facade improvement program funding for four fifty-five King Street in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Um, question about the facade program, because this comes up a lot, and I know the answer, but I just want to make sure I'm not giving the wrong answer. Um, so a building owner can apply, but a business owner can also apply to have work done to the facade program, correct?
That's correct.
Right. So, kind of want, this is my little segue to say to people who are, who own a business but don't own the building, you can still go through this program, because I've maybe had three in the last three months who said, oh, I don't own the building, so I guess I can't participate in it. You absolutely can, just have to make an application, so. Call Nick Brown at the town. At the town, like, don't call him at home, that's, that's not. Uh, there's no other further, no further business to come to. Counsel, motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Thorburn, seconded by Mayor Tanner. You're adjourned.
Thank you.